Hour late for the FITA meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Don't worry, Amy and I were the only one that showed up, but we didn't have a quorum anyways.
Really?
Yes. So, we wouldn't have had a quorum even if you showed up.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Monday, August 13th, 2018. It's 5:30 PM, and we are in the City Hall Council Chambers. Enroll call Patty.
Syfers.
Present.
Hawkins.
Present.
Hassick.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Zerling.
Here.
It's been determined that we have a quorum. We will now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is to approve tonight's agenda, and there are two additions, 13.2 event permit for Soccer Fest and 15.5, the vacation of 13th Street and alleys. And so with it is there please a motion to approve the agenda with additions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Hawkins and second by Zerling. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next one is 6.1 minutes from our last meeting on July the 23rd, and the minutes were in your packet. Is there please a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion offered by Syfers and second by Hassick. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next item is 13.1, the renewal of an on-sale wine license.
Dave Hanson with the Dairy Freeze also owns the Deep Freeze at 1506 Albion. They're open from September till April. This is a wine and beer license, 3-2 beer license, and it's a renewal. They've presented everything to Patty that she needs. Staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion please to approve the renewal of the on-sale wine license and on-sale 3.2 beer license for David Hanson Dairy Freeze Incorporated doing business as Dairy Freeze?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Zerling and second by Peters. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 13.2 event permit for the Soccer Fest, Mike.
The Soccer Association wants to hold a Soccer Fest this Saturday, the 18th, and it's a special event, so they need permission from all of you to do that. Staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion please to approve the event permit for the Fairmont Soccer Association Soccer Fest on August the 18th, 2018?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hassick and second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 15.1 administrative citation fee schedule, Mike.
In preparation for the implementation of our administrative citations, and we need to adopt a fee schedule so that we can administer our administrative citations. So in front of you is a resolution and a fine schedule.
Is there a motion please to adopt Resolution 2018-22 Administrative Citation Fee Schedule as Presented?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins.
Second.
Second by Syfers. Is there any further discussion?
Question. Is this something that's been in the... Where'd you come up with the numbers?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Looking at other fine schedules around the state, what other people are doing, and I think part of that where the illicit storm sewer discharge and that sort of thing, I think maybe some of those fines are mandated. Troy, is that...
No, the numbers are from...
Okay.
Okay.
So, I think we're pretty comparable.
Just curious.
Is there any other discussion? This is a roll call vote, please Patty.
Hassick.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Zerling.
Yes.
Syfers.
Yes. Resolution has passed. 15.2 administrative hearing officers and...
Another part of the administrative citation process is to appoint administrative hearing officers that these would be area attorneys that would hear individuals' cases that wanted to appeal the city staff's decision. So, I'm just asking that you appoint the list of attorneys in Resolution 2018-23.
Would you like to name them, the attorneys that have agreed to be part of this?
I sure can. Would be Michael Edmund, Brandon Edmondson, Sarah Edmondson, Daniel Lundquist, Kim Schaefer, Bruce Sellers, and Michael Tow.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion please to adopt Resolution 2018-23 Appointing Hearing Officers and Establishing Rate of Pay?
So moved.
Motion offered by Zerling.
Second.
And second by Peters. Is there any further discussion?
Of course.
Okay.
Just curious.
Yeah.
How'd you get them to work for that? Isn't that a little bit below standard attorney's fees?
Well, it's partially... It is. That $165 is an average of what they all said they would do this for, and I think there's some community service element to it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please Patty.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Zerling.
Yes.
Syfers.
Yes.
Hassick.
Yes.
The resolution has passed. 15.3 Administrative Citations, Mike.
This is to amend Chapter 2 of our code to make it consistent with the plan we're going to implement. One part of our code said that a person could, after the administrative hearing, they could appeal to the council. Staff's thinking that once they appeal to the administrative hearing, their next option should be district court and not the council. We're trying to do this to streamline things, so that should do this. And so, since our codes, the administrative citation process has been in place since 96, we're amending our code. So, what I'll ask you to do tonight is just to call for a public hearing for the 27th to then address this code amendment.
Okay. Is there a motion please to call for a public hearing on August 27th, 2018, at 5:30 PM here in the City Hall Council Chambers to consider ordinance 2018-16.
Move to approve.
Motion offered by Zerling.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 15.5 House Demolition Assistance and Mike.
Mark Atkinson is the owner of a property located at 217 down, or South Main Street. We are in the process of tearing down 28 and 30 Downtown Plaza, which is on the other side. So, we'd be able to clean up quite a few houses in this area. Mark was asking us to help participate in his, tearing down his building as well, and is requesting $5,000 or 50%. And his bid for the project came in at $12,750 plus the asbestos abatement, so the maximum he's eligible for is the $5,000, and we're, staff's recommending that the council approve that. Help us get one more house tore down in that area where there's certainly a collection of bad ones.
Is there a motion please to approve demolition assistance at 50% of the actual cost of $2,500?
So approved.
Motion offered by Zerling and second by Peters. Is there any further discussion? My question, Mike, would be how did Mark Atkinson find out about this service that's available to them? That was there? Did we approach him?
Well, they, he and another neighbor want to buy the lots at 28 and 30 Downtown Plaza because they abut their properties, and we were talking about it, and I told him, "We've got this program," and so, you know.
And if other people want to be part of this program, they contact you?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Me or Darcy or anybody upstairs can help get them an application.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 15.5 Vacation A Portion Of 13th Street And Alleys.
Southern Plains Education Cooperative is purchasing the old Lincoln School. Back when the old Lincoln School was built, they built it across 13th Street, which would have extended across the property and an alley. In the title work for the sale, it came up that they wanted proof from the city that we vacated the alley, and we can't find proof that we vacated the alley, but we know it's not there, or that 13th Street, we know it's not there because the building's built on it. So, what we're doing is going back through the process of vacating the 13th Street, and to do that, we have to publish a public hearing and set it for August 27th whereby you can do the vacation through an ordinance? Resolution?
Resolution.
Okay.
But you all have to be here because it has to be a four-face vote to prove it. Okay. All right. Is there a motion please to set a public hearing for August 27th, 2018, at 5:30 PM and to direct the city clerk to mail and publish notice of the hearing?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Peters and second by Hassick. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next item is 17, and we'll let Mike, Mike can go first.
We're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, and we are in the process of establishing a comprehensive plan committee. We need, we need three or four more citizens to participate in that, so council members, if you have a name you want to bring forward, I'm sure I'd like to hear that, and we'll contact the people to see if they want to get involved, Megan and I, so I'm just looking for someone that's interested in how our community's going to grow the next five, 10, 15 years and sit down. It's a lengthy process, probably 18 months, so it is a time commitment, but I think our committee's growing to between 25 and 30 because we're conscious that not everybody can be there each time, so. It is a good process, and if you care about the community, it's something to be involved in.
Did the FITA board pick some members to be on that, or are you going to pick some?
I think, I think that Lindsay gave Megan some names today.
Okay.
And then, as, for you and Bruce from a FITA board standpoint, the council is also part of this committee, so. And each meeting will be published as a meeting, so all of you can attend if you want.
And the first meeting is like the 20th?
August 29th is our kickoff.
Okay. Thank you. Any council members have anything that they'd like to address under 17?
I do. I just want to make sure everybody takes in the county fair, and on Saturday is Bacon Day at the fair, so there'll be a lot of fun things for the kids to do, and Marty, our new mascot, will be there at the fair on Saturday, so.
For bacon capital of the USA, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, also, would you just, also, I've had a lot of comments on our roads and the patching of our roads, and I'm wondering if you would comment on that again. I know we commented on last week, but they're wondering where you're at in patching and, you know, what our future plans are.
Well, I think, to begin with, we started off behind schedule just because of the longer winter, and then rain events kept us from that. I think we're back on schedule now. We finished 4th Street last week. The parking lot behind Methodist Church was paved. They're down on Prairie and kind of the little extension behind, I would call Terry McIsid's building. That's, so I think we're getting back on track. We've had one, one of our employees that's been out on extended leave. We just had another one get hurt, so we've been struggling with a full crew, but we're, we're getting there. We just got backed up from a lot of things that happened in the beginning, and now we're playing catch-up. And usually, we're done a little sooner than this, but it's taken us a little while, and we had an extremely difficult winter on our roads, so there's more holes to patch.
When is 4th Street planned on getting redone? Because it still isn't in very good shape.
Potentially 2019. It's one of those on the list to review in 2019.
So, it might be done next year?
Yes. It would be part of the 20, potentially part of the 2019 improvement program.
Is there anything else that they can do down there to smooth some of that out?
Well, I drove it the other day, and I thought it's better with the patches, but it is. I mean, part of the issue on the, on what I would call the east end of that road is there's a lot of truck traffic there that's been beating that up for several years, and you've got, it's a pretty heavy industrial area.
Is that due for reconstruction, or is that due for more overlay? I don't remember. The challenge with 4th Street is it's asphalt overlay over concrete streets, so the concrete street panels underneath are all a little uneven, and the initial asphalt overlay was a nice...
With riding surface, and now you're seeing that reflection of the concrete through there, and it's giving the rougher ride. Challenge again is going to be whether we reconstruct or try and resurface to get the road, you know. I'm hearing a lot of comments about potholes and rideability, and that we should maybe focus a little more on trying to spread out some of the money to improve the ride on our streets versus focusing on one or two projects and doing a full reconstruct from a cost perspective of evaluating the sewer and water. So, that's part of the evaluation that's going to go into the 2019 improvement program. That's why I say it's on the list, but how extensive the repairs might, may or may not be is to be determined on other projects as well.
When will that all take place, Troy? What's the timeline?
Generally, the 2019 improvement program's in March, February, March is when it'll come to the council for discussion and approval, and then we'll start that construction process in summer season of 2019.
You typically don't give us options, right? I mean, you kind of decide whether it's going to be an overlay or a tear it up.
Generally, yeah, we try to come with a proposal to you.
Because that is a tough one. I mean, that street is, it's bad.
And there's a lot of, and there are a lot of storm water problems down in there too that kind of need to be addressed?
It's one of the areas, yes. That's, yeah, and that's the other part of it, how an overlay versus a reconstruct versus storm sewer repairs. It's trying to balance all these 73 miles of street.
Approximately how long's it been since that's been overlaid?
It's, I think the overlay is almost 20 years old, so it's held up quite well.
The Band-Aid works.
Yes.
For a while. Of course, it's not working anymore.
No.
Well, it's not.
And the projects all depend on how much monies you have available to you, and...
Well, it's generally set on the, on the tax levy of, for debt service, and so it's kind of set at, here's how much we bond for every two years for a street. Yes.
Thank you.
And this is going to sound a little bit like a personal request, but it's really not. A street like King's Road, which is all cement, and it's got the sections that are heaving and stuff like that, is there long-range plans for changing that, or is it, what do you do with something like that? Can you overlay something like that in the future whenever that comes up, or, I mean, what?
Again, that's, yeah, looking at the condition of the concrete from a ride perspective, an overlay is the way to do it, but the utilities under that street are probably 40s or 50s, and also, you kind of, again, you really, you really want to reconstruct, but you may not have that option. An overlay might be the Band-Aid, if that's what you want to call it, to get, to keep a rideable surface.
So, a lot of that depends upon the sewer television and things of that nature?
Yep, if we've had history of water main breaks and condition of the sewer, if we got a lot of root problems, if we're cleaning it more regularly than other areas, or, or storm sewer issues.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to be, sorry, I didn't mean to be derogatory, Band-Aid, I mean, that's... If you do five, five times more, right, or whatever it is, five times more on overlays as opposed to reconstruct, you know, there's merit to that.
As long as you can buy without having to do the reconstruct for 15, 20 years, then, you know, then it makes sense to me, but...
We need to catch up.
We do need to catch up.
We do need to catch up.
Where are we at on, like, Lake Avenue out here by the 408 stop?
As far as a reconstruction, resurface, that one's another one that's kind of in-between. It could be overlaid, it says you go further west towards 39, it gets a little rougher. The subbase probably needs some more work there. They are going to be doing some patching out there. I believe that's the next spot they're headed to with patching here tomorrow or the next day. So, they'll be doing a little bit of that, but it's another one that's...
Sees a lot of traffic.
It sees a lot of traffic.
Well, we have some underground services that, on Lake Avenue, but more in the courthouse area that may need to be addressed, you know, with a full reconstruction before we reconstruct out west. So, we're kind of weighing that, and since, well, in the last 12 years, haven't we had two major projects on Lake, on Lake Avenue, and it was disruptive to businesses and that sort of thing, so we kind of backed off there for a while, but we're going to have to get back on there, and unfortunately, we might have to finish that easterly portion of Lake Avenue before the west, potentially.
Let me ask, speaking of the Lake Avenue area, I know that we talked about it, FITA, about helping get better internet service out to the industrial park, does Midcontinent, are they out to the corner?
Yes.
So, they, we don't have to worry about...
They're, they're, they're in a ditch, so it's...
They're in a ditch.
Yeah, they're outside the street, right? They're outside the Kermit.
The point is, is they're far enough out there that we, that wouldn't be an incentive to try to do anything sooner because they're already there.
Correct.
Super, thank you.
You know, as long as we got time, and I never think of it, but people ask me, speaking of Lake Avenue, how come it's 40 miles an hour, about 300 yards difference, the speed limit change going east as opposed to going west? Any idea?
Nope.
Well, let's change it.
I didn't realize.
Oh, God, you know, when you're heading out of town, when you're heading west.
Okay.
A speed limit sign is prob, it's probably 30 mile an hour zone, a couple football fields than when you're coming in west, and it seems odd. And then, and that just, I just noticed this today, Lair Road is 55 mile an hour going west and 50 mile an hour coming east from the city limits into the residential area, which I also find a little odd. So, just a couple...
You said the speed is, the speed is lower coming into the residential area?
The speed limit going east on Lair Road from the city limits, from County 39, is 50. And when you're going west, it's 55.
That's because there's nobody out there to interfere with traffic going that way, so you can drive 55. When you're coming into town, there's all sorts of possible conflicts with traffic, and so that's why it's 50 because people generally drive a little faster anyway than the speed limit, so...
Well, because there's, because all the driveways are on that side, is what you're saying. Okay.
Okay. There is some logic.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be darned.
And then, Troy, how about Falcon Drive? Is that soon? Or, even for patching? I don't think it's been done yet. It's out there by the, on the other side of the high school.
It's probably a little, I don't, I don't know that one for sure off the top of my head. I don't believe it's on the list of reconstruction projects, I know that, but it might be on the overlay, and it may be, I'd have to check with Nick's list as far as patching.
Super. Thank you.
Can we have a list of what streets are going to be patched?
Like this year? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Sure.
Do all of them get patched? I mean, are, do every...
What's that?
Do every, does every street that you know's got holes get patched?
Generally speaking, I think they try and target the, I mean, obviously try and hit the priority ones first that we're hearing the most comments about or have the highest traffic volumes.
Or do you sometimes, like, right in front of my driveway, there's a great big one. The rest of it doesn't seem all that bad other than a little bit of the, of the slab differential, but there's one great big one, so do you rely on people to report those things, or...
That would be a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd suggest people letting them know we have the online reporting that you can go on and report a pothole and get that. So, we can add it to our list.
Does the app have it accessible?
Yeah.
There you go.
And back to, back to Counselor Syfers' original question, I think, I just thought of this, part of what slowed us down a little bit, we had more water main breaks this winter than we've had in a while, so those streets had gravel holes, so those were priorities in the beginning of the year, so we were patching those large water main digs or street patches before we got to our smaller pothole patches, so it slowed us up a little bit as well.
I appreciate it because we've talked about it before, but not everybody hears, so we keep getting the comments, even though we've said it, what, a month ago or two months ago? We talk, we talk, you know, it doesn't hurt to go through it again.
The other thing, we... Yeah, the other thing, we've got a new machine that grinds the patch better than it used... I think we're trying to do a better job and make the patch last longer than just dumping asphalt in the hole and running over it with a roller. We're trying to break it out, re... Put new tar in, and so it holds, and it's more of a permanent patch than a Band-Aid without much adhesive to it.
Any other council? Any council members have any other comments? It's all closed, and we have Saturday with the city this coming Saturday, and we will be at Gomri Park Shelter House, and Lindsey Price will be the presenter, and she will give about a 15-minute presentation. She is, what's her official title? Economic.
Economic Development Coordinator.
Coordinator, and she has always got some really great news to share, and she always has a great message, and so people, if you'd like to come out, please join us and again, be at one of our buildings that taxpayers own, and come out and see what Gomri Park is all about. And then also just a friendly reminder that tomorrow is primary election voting, and for those of us in the city limits, it's at the KC Hall from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 o'clock in the evening. And also, it's the filings close for city council positions and the mayor position tomorrow at 4:30. They close. 5:00, 5:00, they close. And so if anyone's interested in those positions. And so is anything else anyone has?
If you choose to file, and after 4:30, come in the plaza doors into second floor. That's where Darcy and I'll be. So if, but if someone came, you know, don't come to the front because it will be closed, but we'll be upstairs, so second floor.
All right. Anything else? Is there a motion please to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Cypher and second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.